Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the ordinary meeting of the Mount Isa City Council. It's now 12:00 PM and I now declare the meeting open. I'd like to start off with just reading... Just reading, please note that the ordinary meeting is being recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy, which can be viewed on our council's website. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given and your image is inadvertently broadcast. Please be advised that no protection is afforded to the public for comments made during the meeting, which are subsequently challenged in a court of law and determined to be inflammatory or slanderous. Council officers and public are required to adhere to the council's standing orders policy, model meetings procedures, and the chamber conditions of entry. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land, the Kalkadoons, on which we work, live, and recognise the continuing connection to the land, water, and the community. We pay respects to elders past, present, and emerging. I'd like to start off by moving a motion that council receive and accept the following council's leave of absence, which is councillor Mick Tully. Could I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay. Now that moves us to item two, and councillor of the clergy representative Father Mick Lowklock from the Good Shepherd Catholic Parish is going to provide the meeting with a prayer.
Good afternoon councillors. This year is the International Year of Peace and Trust declared by the United Nations in 2009. It's fitting on the agenda for council this year, with this consideration about Mount Isa and nuclear disarmament. In the years of Ronald Colox being mayor, Mount Isa was made a refugee-friendly city. We became the first city in Australia to be real Australian. It's fitting that I think this motion that we've put forward to council over coming weeks and months deserves some thought and in my position, some positive action. Peace and trust are very values out of which we live. All our relationships are built on trust, compassion. Peace is the very thing that makes a difference to our lives every day, no matter who we are. So often we say we wish we had Christmas all year round. This year, people are hoping that it will be a year not only of peace and trust, but a year without war. I'd just like to play this little hymn which gathers the peace, the prayer of St Francis in it. But as we do, we might think about a peace in our world, peace in our nation, peace in our state, peace in our city, peace in our homes, and particularly and especially peace in our own lives. Peace too in the council decisions that we make for all people. So I pray that you all have peace in your hearts this year and bless all of you and the work you do for our city. God bless you.
Amen. Well, thank you Father Mick. I say this a lot, but I am so grateful to be in Australia at this time and particularly grateful to be in Mount Isa. And we definitely take our liberties that we have so freely bestowed upon us for granted. And it is a good reminder that, you know, the rest of the world is definitely hurting and we are very fortunate. So thank you, thank you so much for that Father Mick. As we have no one in the public forum today, I just will take us through to item number four, which is the conflict of interest. Councilors are invited to declare any interests in relation to the agenda, including any late items presented. Councillor interests are noted against the relevant items in the minutes clerk for action during the meeting.
Through the chair, Mayor Mayor of Have a Conflict at 7.2, received conflict, so I'll fill out the documentation. So I'd like to leave the meeting for that particular item.
Thank you, we've got that noted. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Okay, item six, which is the previous council minute meeting. Okay, so that will take us to item five, which is part of the... Do we spend the meeting to do this? Nope. So every Friday, our staff have a sort of dress down day as we all dress for a cause. And so they wear casual clothes and they all make a donation. And the staff have raised $435.45. And this is basically to improve the lives of caring type one diabetes, so it's JDRF. Yeah, so a really great cause. It's probably not one of those ones that's first on your list, but... So we'd just like to make a presentation. Oh, that's good. And I've just been informed that the next donation we're making will be to the Mount Isa Men's Shed, so another great cause. So, yep, thank you very much. Okay, so can I get someone to put the motion forward for that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 9th of December 2020 as received and be confirmed? Can anyone put that motion forward?
So I move Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. All those in favour? And that's carried. Also, could I get someone to put the motion forward that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 17th of November 2020 as received and be confirmed? Thank you councillor McCray. A second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to our next item, which is item seven, and that's development and land use. And I'll hand you over to councillor George Fortune.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the quarter two, October to December 2020, development and land use call report.
Thank you. And can I get a second for that motion?
Seconding.
Thank you councillor Streton. Any comments on this one?
No comments from me.
I'd like to ask a question please on 7.1, number 1.2, the building applications. If I could have something explained to me. The building... Hang on, I've got to get it right. So when people put in a building application, the building approvals are issued by a private building certifier. Are they, and that would be at the expense of the people putting it in, is that work checked off by council at all, or the certificate is enough?
Through you Madam Mayor, the certificate is enough. So that person is recognised as a building surveyor and has to meet all, building certifier, sorry, has to meet all those requirements under the act. So there's only a specialist number. I believe this person, if I remember correctly, might even fly in from Townsville.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 7.2, to councillor Fortune.
Thank you.
Oh, yep. And Deputy Mayor has a conflict of interest, so is leaving the chambers?
Thank you Madam Mayor. 7.2 is the application for conversion to freehold of a non-competitive lease. The officer's recommendation is that council advise the Department of Natural Resources, Mines and Energy that council supports this application for conversion of freehold tenure over the land described as lot 65 on Crown Plan MPH 22018, Mount Isa, with all costs associated with the freehold conversion to be met by the applicant.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconding.
Thank you councillor Streton. Is there any comments on this motion?
No comments from me.
Terrific. All those in favour? And that's carried. Deputy Mayor back in? Welcome back. Which takes us to 7.3, councillor Fortune.
Thank you Madam Mayor. 7.3 is the material change of use for a pet crematorium incinerator and cremulator. There's officer's recommendation that I will move that council approve the application for a material change of use for a pet crematorium incinerator and cremulator at 37 Old Mike Creek Road, Mount Isa, described as lot one on plan MPH 8087, subject to the conditions following. So the conditions are 1, 2, 23.
Yep.
And I'll move that those conditions be moved as all through there.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any comments on this one?
Through the chair. Look, just a statement really, Madam Mayor, I think this is a really great application if it goes through and is supported. It's something that I know a lot of residents have close to their heart and they would like to see happen in the community. And there's been some talk about it for quite considerable time, so it's another good part to it. It is a commercial operation and it's not landed on council's doorstep either, so yes, I fully support them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, it's something that's required in Mount Isa, I think, or required by the community. Previously, if pet owners wanted to cremate their animals, they had to travel to Townsville and at great costs. And it brings another facet to our community, I suppose, that makes it a livable community.
Thank you councillor Fortune. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. This takes us to item eight, which is works and construction. Councillor Mick Tully and the deputy mayor is actually going to take this one over for us.
Thank you Madam Mayor. So at 8.1, we have a monthly report for the infrastructure services, so I'll move that council receives and accepts the December 2020 infrastructure services monthly report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one?
Through the chair, just a couple of things I'd like to mention from my perspective. The artwork, the mention there of the Markham Valley Road development and the arts, regional arts committee met just recently and we've had a look at a possible concept for, just to complete that project off, to have some finishing artwork attached to it. So that's sort of going through some concept stages at the moment, so hopefully that'll be, that'll be through and it won't hold up the development at all. And the other thing, there's a mention there about the work on the civic centre as well, and I think it comes up later in the agenda. In the report, there's, was an indication that it would open the ground floor for public use by around, round about now, in mid-January. So I've checked with the MICO manager and the earliest I have a need is possibly late February, early May, early March. So just wondering how that's sort of unfolding at the present time.
Through you Madam Mayor, I might ask interim director to respond.
Thank you Bernard.
Thank you.
So any more questions on this one for 8.1?
Yeah, just on that one, with the artwork for Markham Valley Road, will that be coming to council before the grant's put in? Or does just put the grant in and...?
Through the chair. Look, my understanding is that there is some money within the project to do, to do this finishing work, and we may be looking at that. If there is any shortfall, we may back that up with some money that we already have in the arts bucket.
Okay then. The other thing, the family fun park, are we still on track for that to be upgraded?
So through you Madam Mayor, the councillors have a briefing after this council meeting, and it would appear that everything is on track, and we just want to validate the works that have been proposed down there over the next period of time.
Okay then. And after that, we will be letting the public know if we're still on track?
Yeah, letting the public know through you Madam Mayor, and also putting it out to contract.
Okay then, all right.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Is there any other comments? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And we have touched on this one, which is the 8.2.
Thanks Madam Mayor, yeah. I jumped ahead a bit there. But so there's an officer's recommendation around the civic centre remedial works, so I'll move that council receives and note the civic centre remedial works report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconding.
Thank you councillor Streton. I know we've had some comments already, any more comments on the civic centre? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 8.3, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, 8.3, council's looking at procurement of waste collection trucks, and this recommendation is from the officers, that council in compliance with the Local Government Act 2009, chapter one, section four, two, the local government principles be, sustainable development and management of assets and infrastructure and delivery of effective services, awards the procurement of two waste collection trucks to Tony Island Isuzu, Garbutt, Queensland, 4814, in the amount of $657,985 and 12 cents excluding GST.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Is there any comments on this one?
Through the chair, I think it's just pertinent to point out that this is a turnover of vehicles that have been around for quite some time and are proving very costly in maintenance. And it's good to keep the fleet at a reasonable level, service the community adequately. So I fully support the recommendation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 8.4, which is the Camerewell Town Hall civic and restumping works.
Thank you Madam Mayor. So the officer's recommendation is that council in compliance with the Local Government Act 2009, chapter one, section four, two, the local government principles be, sustainable development and management of assets and infrastructure and delivery of effective services, awards the contract for rectification works at the Camerewell Hall to Oscott Construction in accordance with their tender submission of $546,619.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Streton. Are there any comments on this one?
Yeah, it's through the chair. Madam Mayor, I just think this is a great thing to happen out of Camerewell. We've been sort of going at it for years now and it's glad to see something finally happening, to do that old hole up. It is a masterpiece of Camerewell.
Agreed, agreed.
Just through the chair, agree with councillor Streton is saying, within the scope of works that the construction company are doing, do they use local people where possible? Is that part of their contract?
Through you Madam Mayor. Contractors are always encouraged to purchase locally. And this scenario will be a bit different because they will need to go in and mobilise at Camerewell, but I'm sure they will be having an impact on the different services that are offered there. Each of the people that puts in a response to the procurement is also measured on a local component, a local component within that. Off the top of my head, I cannot remember what their mark was. I don't know if the interim director is aware?
Thank you Bernard. Thank you councillor Coghlan. If there are no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, and that takes us to 8.5, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Madam Mayor. So the officer's recommendation is around the recycling storage shed to be constructed at the waste management facility. And the officer's recommendation, and I'll move that the councillor, councillor award the design, supply, and install of the recycling storage shed, RFT/220-5ES, to Richardson Building Service for the amount of $308,450 excluding GST, with approval to negotiate any relevant variations within the project's approved budget.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconding.
Thank you councillor Streton. Is there any comments on this one?
Through the chair. Look, this particular item is probably a good start on the recycling that we sort of badly need to have here in Mount Isa. And I know the community is highly supportive of us to do recycling work, whatever design or concepts that may take down in the future, but this is certainly a step forward in that direction.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, this takes us to item nine, which is beautification, parks, gardens, and youth. And this is councillor Kim Coghlan.
We have an officer's recommendation here that council receives and accepts the December 2020 Parks and Gardens monthly report.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCray. Do we have any comments on this one?
Yes, I do. I know the crews are working very hard at the moment due to, I mean, the rain's lovely, but it does increase the grass and everything around town and easements and parks and that. I know there are a lot of easements getting cleared at the moment. Is that through the state? Are they state easements or are they council easements? Because I do know there has been discrepancy in previous years that we're actually doing the job for the state and not getting paid for it.
Through you Madam Mayor, I would never want to undertake work that we're not getting paid for. But I believe that the state has got budgets to undertake the cleaning of their easements. I don't know if the interim director is aware at this point. So we, I know we did say we'd chase this up, we will chase this up again to try and ensure. I know there has been a lot of work done around easements recently, and we've received positive feedback from the community in relation to those easements being claimed.
Yep, no, that's good. And the second one was, it was very good to see that the Parks and Gardens crew in the medium strip across from the hospital have actually cleared it and all that, but I would like council to write a letter to the Mount Isa Police, because I don't feel it's very safe if people are sitting there for whatever reason, they should be moved on the minute they sit down there. So I would like us to write a letter to the police to make it noted that the police should be moving these people on, because it's just a recipe for disaster, especially at night time.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Through you Madam Mayor, the interim director's, I think, taken a note of that and will prepare some correspondence to go out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Is there any other comments on this one?
Just one item, Madam Mayor, quick one. The trees at the cemetery, the fig trees, large ones, they seem to be recovering after the damage from the bats over the recent years, but I just wonder what our approach is going to be with those trees? Are we going to try and keep the canopy down a reasonable level by trimming it from the, trimming the new growth back? Or are we allowed to in fact?
Thank, thank, thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you Bernard. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 10, which is tourism, events, sport, and recreation library, and that's councillor Peter McCray. Thank you councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Do we have any comments or questions on this one?
No, I just a reminder that the public consultation for the master plan is still open until three to seven. I think there might be a hundred dollar prize. Get on and give some good ideas. The project has been extended to encompass the whole council precinct to make it more modern and community friendly, so if anyone is going to put your ideas forward, we'd love to do it.
Thank you. Thank you councillor McCray. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 10.2. Thank you councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Is there any comments or questions on this one?
The report for this one mainly talked about the trouble we had that we had last year. I'd just like to make mention of our most recent events for a train break yesterday. I wasn't able to attend because I was working, but I understand from everyone that did go that they were very well received. A lot of people participated in them and, yeah, the community was really... A lot of people participated in them and yeah, the community was really happy with it. And I'd also like to thank the staff that gave up their public holiday to work for our community.
Thank you councillor McCrae, and I can vouch for that, I had nothing but praise from community members and also even the staff were very excited about the, you know, how supported they were by the community. And going to all three events, I've never seen our backyard Isa so full. And there was a buzz, it was fantastic and also town pool was very well utilised. And the Australia Day ceremony was fantastic and we had the Rolling Tones who sang all the songs and it just made, that's probably my best Australia Day so far. It was really good and it's a credit to the staff, I think they just went above and beyond what they had to do and I can't thank them enough. It was a real pleasure to be there, so my feedback. So, any more comments on that one?
Yeah, no, I attended most of those venues and for a while and yeah, it was certainly enjoyable. It was certainly well attended by the public at each site, so I think it was well worthwhile and I know the staff pulled it together fairly quickly, but it was yeah, well received.
It was fantastic and I think we have to recognise that there's councils all over Australia cancelling their events and we're so fortunate to be able to host, probably not exactly what we'd normally do in the past. But it was still, we still hosted a great, a great few events, so yeah, fantastic. And that's a credit to the tourism and events team. If there's no other comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried, thank you so much. And that takes us to item eleven, which is the environmental management, and that's councillor Paul Stradden.
Yeah, thank you Madam Mayor, eleven point one, officer's recommendation there. The council receive and accepts the November, December twenty twenty water and soil monthly report.
Thank you councillor Stradden, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, are there any comments or questions on this one?
Got nothing further to say on that, Madam Mayor, unless one of the interim managers got something to say?
No, okay. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point two.
Eleven point two, waste management monthly report, officer's recommendations there is council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty waste management monthly report.
Can I get a second for that motion please?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, any comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, just a couple there, Madam Mayor, back in December, we had a few issues with the rain out at the tip and that sort of thing. That interrupted our services, but everything's back on board for January.
Thank you, thank you councillor Stradden. There's no other comments or questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point three.
Eleven point three, environmental services monthly report. Officer's recommendation, council receives and accepts the November, December twenty twenty environmental services monthly report.
Thank you councillor Stradden, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae, any comments or questions on this one?
No further comments on that, Madam Mayor.
All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point.
Eleven point four, local laws monthly report, officer's recommendation, council receives and accepts the November, December twenty twenty local laws monthly report.
Thank you councillor Stradden, is there, can I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, any comments or questions on this one?
No, just one comment, Madam Mayor, there, the people can go out to the, what is it, the animal management thing? Get their dogs mortgage chip now, which is a great plus, so people can start doing that there.
Terrific, thank you so much for that councillor Stradden. Any other comments on this one?
Through the chair, there seems to be a lot of feral cats being captured, November, December there, although December was down a bit naturally. But is that, is that higher than normal or do you think that's through anybody?
Through you Madam Mayor.
I just think this time of year with the rain and that sort of stuff around does tend to bring out the wild animals in the town, you know?
Through you Madam Mayor, there are a lot of people booking out the cat cages as well. So it may be that the cat cages are actually capturing more of the cats and bringing the numbers through as well.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a serious problem in this part of the world around here, so yeah, it's good to see that we're doing our little bit.
And I noticed that the animal management facility has now a misting spray at the drop off area, so that'd be good to get some feedback on how that, that's going as well. So that's, that's a good initiative.
And blinds at the front.
And the blinds, yep, so that'd be, get some feedback on that, that's great. Thank you councillor Stradden. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And now this takes us to item twelve, which is the corporate and financial services, the economic development, promotions and development, and that's Deputy Mayor councillor Phil Barwick.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I'll move that council receives and accepts the November, December two thousand and twenty customer services monthly report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, is there any comments or questions on this one?
Just a few comments, Madam Mayor, thanks, I note that the December calls were down a fair bit as you'd expect during that period. We're still doing over two thousand calls a month. So I think that's through the telephone system, it's quite a, keeps it busy at the front there. The maintenance levels through the customer service operations remain high around the COVID protection for everybody, customers and for the staff. A note about the iCaseworks, we've had eleven thousand three hundred iCaseworks matters logged through council. And of that eleven thousand three hundred, there's still five, around five hundred that remain open. It's probably a touch high, I'd sort of like to see that figure come down a bit, but I guess as we get more directors in place, more staff, it'll probably, it probably will have an impact on that. And I, just another note, I would say that there is a lot of calls from the community around the COEX inquiries because of being shut down by council. And so there's still a sort of an intensity around the public out there to, you know, to want to see that, that sort of facility available, so we need to sort of have a look at that.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, is there any other comments before we put to a vote? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried, and that takes us to item twelve point two.
Thank you Madam Mayor, so the officer's recommendation, and I'll move that the council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty corporate and financial services monthly report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae, any comments or questions on this one?
Through the chair, so the revenue is notably down for the year to date as of December thirty one. So having a look at it, I believe it's a timing issue across the year and we are moving into a revised interim budget period. So it might come, come out there, but we do, we are waiting for such things as the financial assistance grants from the federal government. And also the, possibly the dividend from the Water Board, which should bring the revenue back in closer to budget. But it is significantly down at this point in time. The cash at the end of the first six months is quite good and at a high level and of the fifty five million I think that's there, we, we do have thirty seven million of that that's committed. There's also a chart there showing the outstanding loans that council have and we've really been working on this over the last few years. So without borrowing any further funds to do our, our work, we've been able to get that down to around about twenty two million outstanding with the Queensland Treasury Corporation. Which is, is fairly low as I understand it, you know, compared to a lot of councils around the state. So I think we're in a quite good position there as well. I do note however, that there is an increase to around two hundred and fifty eight rate payers that are on payment arrangements. That's been reported there from the administration, so we just need to watch that figure because it sort of gives indication of people that might be struggling in the community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to twelve point three.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move that council receives and accepts the November, December two thousand and twenty promotions and development monthly report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae, any comments or questions on this one?
Madam Mayor, I think it's fairly straightforward, the report, it shows there is a high level of activity within the team. And as you can see from the recent events over Christmas during, even during COVID, they've been, been very busy getting our communications out to the, to the public and to the, to the business community. I think they're putting three posts a day through the, through the social media, but I, and I hope the media are getting a hold of that first. So I just, I just note the amount of work that the, the team are doing.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to twelve point four.
Okay, thank you Madam Mayor, the, I'll move that council approve to reinstate the exemption given to the Camerewell Rural Fire Brigade in September nineteen ninety one from all general rates and charges as per section ninety three, three B of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Stradden, any comments or questions on this one?
Just through the chair, the Camerewell Rural Fire Brigade used to receive a concession, you know, from council for their rates and charges for their facilities. So this is something I slipped off the table and has been recognised recently again and this is, this motion is just to reinstate that.
Thank you, thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's no other questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item thirteen, which is executive services, and that's the chief executive officer David Keenan. And the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty correspondence report. Can I get a, someone to put forward that motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty correspondence report.
Thank you, and can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae, any comments or questions on, on that particular one?
Through you Madam Mayor, the format of the council agenda will change over the next months to two months using a program which is called Info Council. That program will allow for these actions to be recorded and presented back to council. That way when an item is brought up, the community can see that the council has acted on the recommendations that have come through. And some of those pieces of correspondence will take some time for a response, but there obviously is the response there from the minister after the meeting that council facilitated with the Flying Foxes. Additionally, there are, there are other information ones for council such as the review of the role of the ombudsman is listed there as well. The other one of note, Madam Mayor, is that the mayor, the mayor recently asked for a letter to be sent to the University of Queensland, which was sent on twenty first of January. And I can inform council, and that was in relation to a university having more of a presence in a city like Mount Isa to actually support the different mining companies with the appropriate level of training as well as getting young people to actually consider a career in mining as something they can do in Mount Isa rather than having to go somewhere else. I can say that one of the professors mentioned there, Professor Neville Plint, the director of the Sustainable Minerals Institute, has already replied via email and indicated that they're keen to explore further opportunities with council. Even they've had a long working history with Mount Isa mines and they value that relationship, but they're keen to meet with the mayor to see what other things are possible at the moment. So by having the correspondence in here, the community is aware of where each of those issues are up to.
And also for councillors as well, because previously we wouldn't have seen that correspondence.
That's exactly right, exactly right.
Through you Madam Mayor, it's all about transparency, so all of this will be put out, so each month there will be an agenda item titled correspondence. And likewise with what councillor Coghlan did today, which was request a letter under the mayor's hand to go through to the police. That will come back to council as well as any response from the police as well.
Yeah, through the chair, I think that's a great initiative, Mr CEO, so yeah, I'm appreciative of seeing those, those letters and I think I'm sure the public will be too. Can I just ask, with those letters being presented, are we allowed to have business out of those, that correspondence?
Through you Madam Mayor, it's appreciated is if, whoever, it's the same way as any council report, that you may, if you get a letter that you're not necessarily that happy with, you might be able to move business, it suggests that another letter be written or something similar.
Yeah, yeah, well I had a, I had a, an item that I wanted to talk about from Senator McDonald's letter, the Black Spot Programme.
Yeah.
Will I do that here? Yeah, okay, through the chair, I, I wonder if the Lake Mundara has been considered by council to be promoted as a black spot? Because I think in terms of people that go out there in emergencies and also the terrorism atmosphere that we're trying to create there in the future that have, have mobile connectivity out there would be fantastic. I think, I think there has been some talk about it, but it doesn't seem to have got off the ground.
Through the chair, I'm very confused now because I thought the black spot program was for roads. There's two, is there two black spot programs?
Through you Madam Mayor, yes.
Lot of freckles around.
So through you Madam Mayor, there are two black spot programs, one, one, one you are very correct on is roads. The second one is for mobile phone towers, that's been around for a very long period of time. There are two different ways of doing the mobile phones, one, a council can simply put in an application and hope for the best. Or two, council can also make an application, but they need to indicate a level of funding that will go through with that one as well. So it may be that what we'll do is, based on what the deputy mayor has said, is we'll come back to council and say, what are, what are the ones that you would like to put down as a priority? And do you wish to put any matching funds?
So if we're doing anything with the black spot program for phones out at the dam, shouldn't the Water Board be doing that? Should they be paying?
Through you Madam, through you Madam Mayor, they can make a contribution to it, you can, you as a council can also put up your black spots as well. The black spots are also based on a lot of work that Telstra's done in the past, which actually maps out where your worst areas are, where you have no signal. So what tends to happen is you incrementally come out of where you are with your strongest coverage. And then you add on to the network as you go through. Other justifications will come in from a disaster management perspective as well, especially where there's connectivity for flood gauges and all that sort of stuff.
And we're definitely a, you know, a shift town and when people are on call and want to go to the lake and they feel they can't go because they might not be able to be contacted. So, you know, that's a really good initiative to have that addressed.
So through you Madam Mayor, this one doesn't close till the, I think it's fifth of March, yeah, fifth of March. So we'll come back to council and say, here are some options for black spot funding, and which ones do you think would be the most appropriate?
And then with this, are we going to, do we have to prompt the Water Board to do their part in it? Or?
Through you Madam Mayor, we're more than happy to do a bit of prompting.
Yep, okay.
Through the chair, wouldn't it just be getting a letter of support from the Water Board because it really is a community that benefits?
Agreed entirely.
Through the chair, it would be appropriate for the CEO to contact the Water Board's CEO and, and find out what is already in, in play there.
There's no problems, we'll do that and bring, through you Madam Mayor, and bring that back to council.
Good point councillor Fortune. And a very good initiative and I think it will go a long way to help council be transparent with the community and hopefully it'd be interesting to get some feedback on that too as well. But I think it's a great initiative and obviously anything that makes things more open is a great thing. All right, do we have any more comments or questions about that one before we? No, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so we have, item fourteen, we have no general business, so I, the time is now twelve forty nine P M and I now declare the meeting closed. Thank you everybody for your attendance.